Okay, welcome back to the June 18th council meeting in time of seven o'clock, 7:00 PM. And with that, we'll call the meetings order out of recess. Come back in. Second, all favor, opposed, carried.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we'll move to item number three, which is reporting or the adoption of the agenda. Is there any additions, a motion to adopt the agenda, second?
Okay, I'd like to make an addition to the agenda and a couple of changes to the agenda. First, I'd like to, in under new business, I have a motion I'd like to bring forward regarding Kelvin Grove parking lot.
Okay.
So if we could discuss that under new business, Mr. Maylie will be speaking to to his letter, I believe in the two-minute portion.
Right.
Yeah, and that's in the correspondence.
Okay, any other items?
Yeah, could I suggest that light up some communication with Counselor Abbott that under committees, we're actually not reporting out on the committees. My understanding is that your item one and two actually are just part of your report. Right, and so, so we take that out of committees and put it into Counselors' report. And my item three is actually, it's not a committee. Noise and Safety Committee meeting, that those are, it's not a committee, so that would simply be a, some notes that I've shared with council, and that would just come under my council report.
So it just was?
So everything in B would basically be struck or removed? Is that fair?
Okay.
Can make it as a comment or as the CEO. So I made that comment in the, in my email, because that's the way I thought it was up to now, but I'm not sure if that's what the CEO is suggesting we should do. Are you suggesting that minutes for committee meetings should come to council separately?
Yes, well.
That's why you wanted to go ahead.
It's a structure, yeah. So they, and they can come and draft them, as long as they say draft. Because ultimately, particularly if they're time-sensitive, if they're not, then adopt them. But the purpose is to make sure that council has access to them.
Okay, so I submitted a report on the committee meetings I had in the last period, and I submitted these as I thought were going to be attachments to the report. You're saying you want them in a separate place?
Ideally, I would, I mean, it's, it's how.
I don't care, I don't care either.
That's fine.
Okay, where it is.
So, so we'll leave yours where they are. And item C, B3, though, is not a committee and will simply be notes that have been shared previously. So if we could strike eight, B3, and it'll just come up under my, my council's report. I'll just share that, it's already been shared.
Noise and Safety?
Yeah. It's a group, group that got together.
So that's the only change, item B3.
I, one more.
Yeah.
You, you didn't add it, I'm gonna suggest I will, the grants, we're not gonna discuss the grants.
That should, no, absolutely, that should be on minutes, on the agenda, I should say.
Business arising.
Okay, granting aid.
Uh, unfinished business. Unfinished business.
Unfinished business, granting aid, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Um, it's the second. We've moved staffing ports. No, cover, cover my file, thank you.
Okay, just to review again, staffing reports, those to that, and the B committees stay as is, or did we make any adjustments there?
So for your question, under section eight, B1 and two, those will remain as.
A8?
A8.
Eight, B1 and two?
B1 and two.
Yeah.
Will remain as committee minutes for, just, just for information. Unless the chair of each and any committees' minutes wishes to highlight anything in the minutes
Okay.
for council's attention. I just gotta get people in here.
Maximize that, six.
All right, any other additions?
Where is it?
Any other additions?
That's true.
Um, I'm, so, we're occupied with the reasons for the meeting. All right.
So, all in favor?
Minutes has amended them, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried.
Abode.
Opposed, sorry, you're opposed, Council Writer?
Yeah, that was opposed to those additions, yeah.
Okay, sorry, we were supposed to.
Carried. Uh, move, Counsel Rowden, second, and Counsel Abbott, those four in the room, Counsel Abbott, Counsel Rowden, Mayor Berry, keep opposed, Counsel Writer.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move to the number four item, public participation, and we'll go to the gallery.
Thank you, well, I'm Kim Maylie, I live at 185 Pike Water, and it's strange when parents get to be more well-known because of their kids' accomplishments, but my daughter obviously went to the Olympics in 2021 and won a gold medal. It was a kind of a fun event, you attended Mayor Berry, because it was the first time our community came out on the big field cheered on the Lions Bay athlete. She was recognized a year later as a citizen of distinction for 2022 for the village, she was honored to be recognized for the next pride, well, problem for me, she's getting married, so to another Olympian. So if they're gonna have lots of energy in the household, the wedding is gonna take place at our house. It's August 31st, Saturday, August 31st. And I made a submission to council to consider my request to rent the Kelvin Grove parking lot on the night of the August 31st. The, I, I don't really don't know how many cars there will be, but I would assume 20 or 25 cars perhaps. My understanding of the, of that parking lot is that there's three village resident spots, and all the rest are paid parking. I've offered to rent it for $500, which I assume would be more than, than the parking lot brings in, in revenue, and it wouldn't be displacing Lions Bay residents, because they would park on the street or, or in the provided spots. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have as you consider this request.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry, just to be clear, are you suggesting the resident, three resident properties will also be left today?
For residents? If, if there's a practical way to, to separate them and stop all the, you know, other cars from they went in, why can't I go in? So I'm not sure of how that part would work.
It would be pretty obvious there, they can stick it on when they wouldn't.
Yes.
We left it, and after that, at least residents could still go walk their dog, whatever they do, that's.
Sure.
Yep.
And there's lots of parking lot on the side.
Yeah.
There are other residence spaces available, that were booked in the parking lot, there are two handicap spaces.
Oh, we're not the residence spaces.
They've changed to handicap to appease another resident.
Oh. I mean, I haven't been that much over a while.
It's the street pocket.
So we leave, leave the handicap, they'll hold the handicap, then.
Absolutely.
So that sounds great.
Do you see what they call? It's not even good.
This sounds other than street.
Okay, any further questions, sir?
So you're saying for the evening? For, for when would you need?
Again, I think I would need to seek assistance from the best way to do it.
Yeah.
You know, at some point, the wedding is shortly after four o'clock. So I don't know if people could come in at nine and buy the day of parking and be asked to leave by three, but but it might just be blocked off to
For the day.
For the day.
Yeah.
So you could work with staff?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay, any other questions, Mr. Maylie?
So we'll, we'll be able to under new business name.
Perfect. Thanks, you're good, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Ah, thank you.
Okay, take care.
Bye-bye. Okay, there is no one else in the gallery.
There's a hand up.
We'll go online to the Zoom participants. Uh, Norma, if you'll unmute.
Hi. So I was wondering, May 15th was the closing date listed on the request for proposal for financial audit services, but no announcement has been made about the results. Has a new auditor been selected? Also, according to the community charter, each year before June 30th, council must prepare an annual report, including audited financial statements. This is occurring now for 2022 village finances, but a year late. The deadline for 2023 report has already been missed, since the report must be made public at least 14 days prior to the annual meeting, which must be held by June 30th. What is happening with the 2023 annual report and audited financial statements?
Mr. Blackwell, if you know how to update us. Certainly. So staff are in the process of trying to identify a viable auditor to undertake the 2023 audit. We have nobody in place at this point, but we are continuing to identify an appropriate auditor. Once that's done, and the audit is complete, and concurrently, in fact, the 2023 annual report will be prepared. It will also be delayed, of course, because of this auditing setback, but we hope to be back on schedule then for 2024.
Okay, thank you. Any further, Norma Rogers?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other speakers online? No, okay, with that, we'll move to item number five, approval of the minutes, we have a motion to approve May 21st, 2024 minutes.
I'll put it forward.
Uh, second. Do we have a second or?
Second.
Okay, any amendments?
Not for me.
Could I just clarify, under committees, under mayor and council, there were a number of motions.
Page you?
I'm sorry, page four of seven, page six of 67.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I was, I was in, had a conflict and then, and missed that part of the meeting, so just to clarify, there was quite a number of motions put forward, and they were put together as a package, and then defeated, is that right? So. Okay, and they were all to do with, with recommendations of various consultants and, and prevent, and provincial bodies. So, okay. Okay, so that's, that's clear.
Okay, we'll call a question, all in favor?
Yes.
All right. Carried?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve June 4th, 2024 minutes?
I'll put it forward.
Oop, second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Um, yeah, I'm on page 14 of 67, so five of five of the of the actual minutes. It would seem we managed to approve two different resolutions on exactly the same motion, which technically isn't possible. Let's have a repeat page. 14 of 67.
14.
Or five of five of the minutes.
Yeah, I believe, my recollection is, one is that the LGNA experts' recommendations be brought to council for consideration, and then there was a further recommendation or motion of that it be reported out to the public. So there were two different items, but I think we've included, brought to the council for consideration twice, and it shouldn't be that, it was reported to the public, was the second.
Was the second motion, yeah.
That's not what the minutes read. And not the way I remember it, I remember there'd be multiple amendments to amendments. At the end of the day, there could only have been one approved, you can't have more than one amendment approved. At one stage, I think, you and the CEO was trying to help us do an amendment.
What I might recommend is that we go back and review the videotape, and again, the, the motion on the second motion there to report it to the public, that was made by the mayor and seconded by Counsel Rowden, so I do recall that, of course.
To review the mandate.
And that was specifically in reference to, we have the provincial advisors' recommendations, which were put forward in August 31st, and have never been reported out to the public.
Is there any further this one then, to the next meeting?
Uh, yeah, follow-up, and just get some clarification, so I would, I would either table these minutes to, to the next meeting, or refer these minutes to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Confirmed to the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's a refer them to next meeting.
You, you just adopted them.
You did, you moved it in second. Because we allowed you to put forward, put a resolution motion.
Yes.
Okay, I'll put forward the motion, because Ross was saying.
They need to defeat that, that, that motion, the favor was moved to second, they need to defeat.
Okay, so do we need a motion to refer them to the next?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Defeat the motion that's on the table.
So we're gonna, can we reconsider that in the last motion?
That's fine. How about a motion to rescind the last motion?
We're just, just defeat.
Take a vote on it.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yeah.
No, not in favor.
Of, of rescinding.
We're just rescinding the last motion, so we're reconsidering.
Just, we're only, we're not in, we're not in favor of approving this.
Well, it's defeated, now it's a new motion to, to refer that, these minutes to the next.
To the next week, I'll put forward a motion to refer these minutes to the next week.
And have staff.
That's what we wanted to get to.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes, can I just make one further point, that video is still not on the website, that's why I said the email.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to figure that out. All right, opposed, motion carried. Okay, uh, business arising from minutes. You don't have anything?
Is that where we?
Uh, we were putting the grant in aid.
Grant in aid.
Unfinished business.
That's unfinished, yeah.
Yeah, item seven.
Okay, thank you.
We'll move to item seven, unfinished business, and Counsel Rowden, you put that forward, it's the grant in aid package.
Right, okay.
Item B first.
All right. You have item B first, seven A. Granted.
Oh.
Seven B.
Okay.
Follow-up action items, so if there's anything the council wants to
Right.
talk about specifically.
Uh, we'll move to item seven A, and we'll cover grants and aid as seven B. So seven A is follow-up action items from previous meetings, see schedule nine A on page 15. Okay, is there any items, we'll do this as suggested by our CAO, and unless there's any items, we'll just move to receive, is there any items that councils would like to run forward?
Yeah, I, I'd like to would like to see, get them, and update them all of them, just, just in progress, but.
That's fair enough, if you want to go through all of them, we can go through all of them.
Okay.
Okay, we'll start at 297, which is cost benefit analysis on document storage. Mr. Blackwell, status is in progress.
In progress, it's parked right now, we have other far more pressing issues, so it's good, put it in the parking lot.
Okay, item 298, a call, an EPC meeting.
It's geared to my heart, and I think we need to do it next week.
Uh, that's about resourcing, it's on the agenda, I'm not entirely sure when we are gonna be able to do that. I will tell you that we are in the process of posting for an RFP for an EPC coordinator. So assuming we get timely responses of worth, they could run you that, and then be off staff, schedule staffs.
Okay, but in the interim, Fred, who's the deputy EPC, as we had mentioned in the previous meeting.
He might be able to.
He's, he has, he's stepping in as interim, yes, so I don't think we should hold off for an hour of people. I think we should have a meeting soon as Fred's back in town. I think that's the week after next.
Yeah, I, if I can jump in, I, I think that we need to have that urgently, that we're soon gonna be facing issues that require us to get, get, get on this regardless of a permanent EPC director.
Okay, so status is scheduled a meeting, Mr. Blackwell?
That's right.
Okay, item 307, provide preliminary guidance on public participation correspondence response over to Mr. Blackwell.
Yeah, this is a bigger discussion that, that council has to have, this is something that can happen to any type council chooses to make time for this sort of operational discussion. I sent an email out earlier today where I highlighted that the importance of sort of standing meetings to sort of discuss these sorts of operational considerations. And again, I'm sort of, for the, I'm a counselor to contemplate that, because there's, there's a lot of information that needs to be shared.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Was, was it one of those?
Okay, item 310, have re-scoped the connector project, bring back to council. Uh, this is, it's got mayor's task force, I don't believe that should be mayor's task force, that's been referred to staff, I believe, and, uh, Mr. Blackwell, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're in, in contact with TransLink and and getting authority whether that would qualify, I think, that TransLink would qualify or part of the connector as pathways and.
We have confirmation that.
Okay. So the update is, it will qualify?
It will qualify, and so we are in the process of sort of roughly scoping the extent of what, what's involved in that. One of the key components to that funding is to connect to, to enhance transit stops. So the, the, the obvious relationship is to the transit stop by the highway on that. Uh, so we have to sort of, because there's a bigger staff discussion. How, since then, what do you have?
Okay, and just.
Could I jump?
Yeah, Council Writer?
Excuse me, could, yeah, could I ask that on, on this matter, and also, for example, the previous one, the preliminary guidelines, that the CAO keep us informed in, in the form of reports, for something for us to digest, so that we can, in fact, discuss them at, at any future meeting where this comes before us.
Okay. Personally, I'm fine with a verbal report, because I know you've got a lot on your plate. I will remind the counselors that the task force, number one, number two, number one project was the stairs next to the village council, and number two was the jetty. And Mr. Blackwell has said that TransLink has given them a thumbs up on approval process, so I think that's fair, though, Council Writer, we, it would be nice to get an update as this moves along, moves forward. Yeah, Mr. Blackwell?
I can provide just a further update on the stairs, seeing as you raised that, I had conversations with Mr. Burr today, he indicates that it's imminent. It's been waiting for the contractor to come back to town.
Uh, yes, come back to town from Italy and recover from whatever it was called there. Was supposed to start yesterday, but as soon as you feel better, I guess.
That's well.
Pass doses.
Great. Good to hear. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah.
Okay, item 311, proceed with Wayfinder signage project. And that is says mayor's task force, again, not so sure about that, but, uh.
It's subject to community input.
Yeah, this is not even on my radar, I doubt it's on Mr. Burr's radar. Uh, this would be a parking lot item at this point.
Yeah, I don't see this as a task force, so, Mr. Burr?
I think the reason that you see it there is that it was asked by TransLink to put one new project this year in, it was a placeholder project, $15,000 project for this year's grant. The connected task force obviously saw it on the list and, and rejected it. But I would suggest that the council offers altogether, it's, it's, it's not on the right, there, there is a plan, council's seen it, but I don't think.
It's with staff, so that's, I'm fine with eliminating that, anyone else have a problem with eliminating that?
No.
No, okay. Item 312, BC nature municipality, municipal protected areas project, staff.
Yeah, maybe I'll give an update, because I have to keep in contact. Nothing else. The higher sun bias here stepped forward and thought they had a help, they could help us by supplying information from from their GIS, working stuff, and plus contacting some metro. Who thought had all of it, turns out that, that they don't have it, they don't have what we need. I continue, continue, continue to be frustrated by this. And I look at this map on this wall, and all we're looking for is the coordinates at each one of those corners, how can we not have it? It's not possible that we don't have this information, huh?
I'm sure there's a steel post up in the bush somewhere, in each of those corners.
Where's the background file for that map, would answer the question.
If I can speak.
Yeah.
Uh, the request that I've had from these people is for LIDAR.
No, it's not LIDAR, I cleared that it wasn't. I don't know where.
I'm certainly not chasing them, I have to give them some other data that I don't know what it is.
Okay, I'll, I'll include you in the latest email, and I'll back to you again, who came back to me, and I'll explain what we, if all you're looking for is the coordinates of those corners.
And Google Earth is not good enough?
No, can't get it from Google Earth. Back to him, produce that map, be instead of, I think. Has it? Is it? Produced.
No, there's chartboard.
Must be at the land survey map somewhere.
It must be. It's just, okay.
Okay.
All right, so this one's ongoing.
All right.
While I'm going.
It's extremely difficult, for some issues, it's.
Okay, item 314, Lions Bay Beach project update, Mr. Blackwell?
Thank you, so as of today, I've circulated for public to input and RFP for Zineville Beach Park, to provide a secondary option. We will shop that, see what we get, ultimately, the goal is to take it back to the community and council for the final look and confirmation as to what's on the table, what's off the table, so that we can start the project, and say at this point, I think, in October. Completion time is less of an issue. So I'm just completed before next summer, we should move.
Okay, any questions?
Just, where, where has it been circulated to?
It hasn't, it's still in the draft speech.
Oh, I see, I, I thought you said it was certain.
Internal.
Internal, okay.
Okay, now we'll move to item 315.
So, so, you have to see that in the.
I wasn't gonna read to cancel at all. But you need to cancel after. Yeah, once, once we get some responses back, and we know what's, what we have to work with, they'll bring all that back, summarize for, for council's eyes.
Okay, item 315, firefighting water reserve policy, Mr. Burr?
So I was still thinking about that, and wondering if it would be a good idea for councils, see what you're proposing. Might be able to, oh. You don't think so?
No, I don't, unfortunately.
No, council gave you, gave you, gave you direction in the
That's true.
in the resolution, so if you're following the intent of the resolution, that's why I said it. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so that's what's now.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, item 315, firefighting water reserve policy, Mr. Burr?
Uh, that was proposed policy that came to council about three, four, five months ago. Council, I'm to.
Okay, so I would suggest we, are we trying to perhaps see another version of that come, or we strike this and leave it on there, and you'll come with a new version?
This is a firefighting water reserve policy.
Yeah, you remember the one with the three outdoor water use levels, and then two extra ones red and white?
Yeah.
Required some, some fairly difficult decisions to be made around what do you use the water for?
Yeah.
Yeah, council.
Because I clarified, my, my understanding was, was that there was gonna be consultation with the fire chief, I don't think that.
Yeah, I don't think we bunted it, well, first of all, there was a request that we get IC's technical opinion, which we did, and they came back and said, yeah, maybe it should make sense. Now, I think you're right, I think it was the fire chief and council wanted to hear from, was it?
I believe so.
Did you ever have the chance to, after the fire chief?
Yeah, with the, the draft task force, so what I can do there is maybe amend the recommendation as a result of the discussion within the draft task. Amend the recommendation as a result of the discussion within the draft task force specifically with fire chief. In light of developments which you could uh follow or de-grade uh the ASAP project, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe I need to dust that off and and update it.
It sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, that sounds good. It'd be nice to hear from the fire chief too, so maybe we invite the fire chief to give us an update.
Yeah, for that and far as part of my thanks, that'd be great.
Okay, uh, item three sixteen water shortage policy, uh, Mr. Burr.
Um, that. Uh, that was a report to council. Uh, that that asked for the adoption of the policy. Um, events have overtaken that policy now specifically with the advent of ASAP. Uh, the the opening of the third intake and uh the. Significant decrease in consumption. So again, perhaps I will dust that one off. And uh, and see if it's even needed anymore. Essentially, I I. Implemented its recommendations, which was to cut consumption and and. So we're sort of there. I'm 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 looking at it, dust it all and bring it back. Uh, or I suggest there is leave it on. Until I do that.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, next item three seventeen and that is the SVT consultation. Uh, okay, uh, councillor Reuter, you'd asked for some background on that. Uh, and I've mentioned, uh, we've we've, I think we've pretty much reviewed this project. And uh, I I don't think there's any point in continuing to spend further time unless unless you want to. Uh, some additional clarification.
Yeah, I I do. I think the discussion was that uh you had been provided with a. Uh, a letter by by the Ministry of Finance, an invitation to consultation. Um, in previous discussions, you said you had not. Uh, you were unaware of that, and I believe the request was that you provide that letter and any consultation or responses. You provided to the ministry in respect of the S V T to council, so uh, I'm still waiting for that one, the letter.
As I recall, uh, I I had mentioned that you had received that letter. I I will give you further background because I did a little bit of homework on that. Uh, in fact, uh, this this project was uh acquired by yourself back in. Uh, to early two thousand twenty-three. Uh, since that time, we held twenty-two meetings uh that. Uh, we had asked you for updates and each of those twenty-two meetings.
A point, point of order, please.
Yeah.
Yeah, the point of order is that could I ask that we not regurgitate the history? It's a simple. Uh, unfinished action item, which is that you provide the letter to council and any uh responses that you provided. Or communications with the ministry in respect of the S V T.
Uh, that that's background because I'm I'm giving the background because as I say, you had that, that's basically your file for the last year and a half. You're you're referencing, sorry, you're referencing. Yeah, councillor Reuter.
No, I have a point of order. If you could let me uh uh speak to the. I'm asking that you you, yeah, I'm asking that you not engage in a debate on 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 the matter. And that I won't have to either. I'm just asking that you perform the function of of providing the letter. And any responses you provided to the ministry to council.
Okay, uh, councillor Reuter, I'll ask you to politely allow me to speak. I've allowed you to speak. Now you've called two point of orders, okay? So the letter you're referencing is December fifth, and I received that letter December fifth. From the ministry and I forwarded it to all of council. If you check your emails, you'll see that letter in your inbox to all of council. On January eighth, I attempted to send a letter off to the ministry of which. Uh, you chastised myself and the CAO for writing that letter and insisted that you. So January tenth.
On a point, uh, I'm sorry.
No, please let me finish, councillor Reuter. I was politely allowing you to speak. Please let me finish. So January, so December fifth, uh, December fifth. I forwarded that email and that letter from the ministry that you're referencing. So you have it in your inbox. You were managing the file. Twenty-two meetings later, you had every opportunity to respond. January eighth, I tried to respond with a letter of which January tenth, you interfered with the CAO and myself. And asked us to stand down. So we stood down and we allowed you to write that letter. Unfortunately. You did write that letter, but you delivered it February first, and that was a day after the ministry had asked. For a response. So check your inbox, December fifth, I received the letter from ministry, I forwarded it. To you and all the other counselors. And as I say.
All right.
Twenty-two meetings and I politely asked you at each of those meetings for any update. And now unfortunately, it's been turned down. So I think we've spent enough time on this. And I suggest that we get back to the business of the community.
Okay, can I respond to that? I will resist responding to the rather fantastical notions of and recitation of the fact. Um, I'm simply asking once again, uh, and for clarity and and for the state of or for the purpose of the record. There is nothing in my inbox or in anybody else's inbox that I know of in in reference to a letter that you afforded. From the Ministry of Finance. I would just ask you.
I, well, I did forward it to you, so I ask you to to revisit. That would have been December.
The floor. I have the floor. Thank you. I would ask you simply to provide the letter from December fourth. Sent to you by the ministry and any any uh responses. Uh, in terms of the consultation and provide that to all of council. It's that simple. I don't want to get into a rehashing. Uh, of 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 the historical record here. I'm just asking that you do those two things.
I, no, okay, I'm I'm just gonna, before I go to you, councillor Broden. I spent over two hours putting together a binder. What I would suggest is that I hand this to the CAO and the CAO goes through that binder. And if you'll check your inbox, once again, councillor Reuter, December fifth, check your inbox, you'll see that email there. We have wasted enough time on this once again, so I'm going to hand this binder to our CAO and. If you choose to do the homework, because I'm not spending another minute on this. I provided that information to all the council. Councillor Broden, you had your hand up.
Uh, I just, from my understanding, uh, what what I understand councillor Reuter asking for is to respond. That the mayor provided to the December fourth or fifth letter. And my understanding is is that that was provided at the beginning of January. It was unacceptable. It wasn't accepted as apparently, or I I don't know what what happened there. But ultimately councillor Reuter, you took you took over the writing of the letter and sent it on February the first. So I'm 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 unfair. You're asking for a copy of the letter, the the response that the mayor. Uh, made to the December the fifth letter and clearly you had a copy of the letter of the response. That the mayor sent to it to them and or or attempted to send them. And you ultimately adapted it and and moved it from there. So I I I'm sorry, I'm I'm unclear on on what you're asking for. Because it sounds to me like it was provided on January fourth.
I'm I'm happy to clear you up if I may.
Sure.
The the letter that we're speaking about is not the letter that went. Uh, per resolution of council from an October seventeen twenty 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 twenty-three resolution to the Ministry of Finance. What we're speaking about here is the December fourth incoming letter from the Ministry of Finance. Which forms part and parcel of the annual consultation of the communities and those are sent to the mayor. That is the letter that has never been provided to council nor any uh response. Who that may have been provided to the profit. That is a very important component of the speculation and vacancy tax act. That there's an annual consultation with the mayor. That is the letter that I'm asking be provided to council and any. Uh, any uh responses to the Ministry of Finance on behalf of the village.
If I could assist here a little bit, um, the mayor is just providing a letter. Uh, the documenting uh the exactly what you requested. I I really ask that we move on with.
Twenty-two meetings later, I've spent hours on this rehashing this information. I'm I've got the binder right in front of me. Um, Mr. Blackwell, here's the letter, December fourth, here's the email to council, December fifth. And I'll also go to the letter from January tenth. Where councillor Reuter chastised the CAO and myself for trying to respond to this letter. And which we said, look, since you've had twenty-two meetings and opportunities, I will allow you to.
Untrue.
To look at this and uh and we let you respond and councillor, I'm gonna show you the letter because I again, I don't want to waste any more time on this.
Well, no, just you didn't find that what the CAO composed on his own, because he was.
Just just so we're clear, there's the uh December fourth letter from the government. December fifth to Mr. Blackwell and to council. You've been chewing up this council's time for the last year and a half and I and I ask you to politely respect everyone's time and let's move on.
Yeah, we would have been.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor Reuter.
The letter and the response. Thank you.
Count, thank you very much, councillor Reuter.
Last item on the.
Okay, we'll move to grant an aid and uh over to councillor Broden.
Okay, um. During the committee of the whole meeting, um, we was now, we've now, we've received. A list of grant and aid applications sometime ago. Uh, they're actually originally. Uh, provided uh received by by staff, I believe in December. Um, and they're provided to council for review and they've come back two or three times. Uh, ultimately, on the January the fourth meeting, we invited anyone who was interested in speaking to their their. Grant and aid application to attend the that meeting. And we had a number of people who came and and did their presentation. So, no, I think we 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 understand the. Uh, grant and aid applications quite well. Um, so in terms of 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 moving forward with them. Um, there is one that I have some some difficulty with and um I I just.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
If. If you want to separate that. Counts and you think counts is sort of on the same page with regard to all the others, right? We might want to make a motion to pass all of those other ones except for general emphasis.
Right, okay.
Okay, why don't you?
We it's we accept the applicant, the, I'm sorry, I have the list, I think it's right here. So I would move that we um accept the applications. Uh, the complete this, but at this point, uh, that we would review the house on revival request. It's the second one, which is the request and I would would very much have to review that.
So is the motion that council grant all of the requests except for.
The house on revival.
Yeah. Are they numbered initially?
They're not.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, discussion, um, which one Michael's looking at and walking across. Did we get a revised version after the changes we met? We asked for.
Yeah, um, there was a question as to just making sure it's complete. Now, so there was a subversion in the package was completely there is.
There was a case, for example, the friendly pointed out, I didn't need three hundred dollars in extra to remove it. Do we get a revised list after that was that happened?
It's my understanding that the the list is complete. I can check with um our uh good staff. Um, as to uh that, but it's my understanding that the this secondary after the first meeting, um, but.
In the final meeting, committee of the whole. I can't remember. In the final committee of the whole meeting, there's a few more adjustments or requests, yes. Uh, we are proving it with those adjustments is what I'm asking. But I don't seem to, doesn't seem that I was looking to see if we had that version. It doesn't seem.
I unfortunately have not kept a finger on that policy and have to unfortunately. This is the.
Does it jerk off that we have a a updated list for the.
This is the June fourth, uh, twenty twenty-four, page thirty-one of one hundred from the committee of the whole meeting. So I'm I'm not sure whether that's.
In 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 that meeting, we discussed that some of it's, there is honestly need to be corrected. So what you're proving is the corrective.
Right.
Councillor Broden, do you have a copy of it? Do you want to read them on?
No, he doesn't have it.
No, I have a June fourth version. So.
I would I would defer. If we don't have the information for you to properly deliver it on.
I don't think there's some, there's some material changes actually. I mean, it's it's significant, but it's not. It doesn't affect the amount of funds allocated. So. Is that my is that correct?
I have to go back and look at the notes. Uh, we did discuss about, it was a change from the Trailblazers that didn't need as much. Many as they originally allocate. It was an email from John Day.
Right.
Um, there was from from the birth family, about the third or fourth timings meetings, they said. They didn't use the three hundred dollars last year. They don't need another three hundred dollars this year. Please put it back in reserves. And.
It's an in kind request.
But however, to Michael's point is, some of these committees need to get this money and start spending. Like the events committee, we've been dragging on with this for like months now.
Yeah. So so uh the the list that I've got here is Lions Bay Bird Friendly, it has requested three hundred dollars. And in kind requested three hundred dollars. So could I just suggest that we remove that first three hundred dollars? I understand that that's been, that that was.
Do you want to? Oh, you can't pick up position.
Once the critical ones, I think, are the events committee, especially with the uh.
Okay, so.
Why don't we deal with that first?
So defeat this motion and then.
Uh, let's.
Yeah, neither one defeating.
Okay, motion rescind, this is the last motion.
So.
Second. Opposed, carry.
Okay, so I would remove the Lions Bay Events Committee that we move forward with that request.
And the amount is?
Five thousand and one thousand in kind.
Okay, second. Discussion. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Next one, councillor Broden.
Sorry, Lions Bay Trailblazers. That was the Lions Bay Events Committee, yeah, the Lions Bay Trailblazers. Now, there is originally fifteen hundred requested. That was withdrawn, is that right? I'm trying to recall the letter. I certainly have the letter.
Um, initially, I thought it was withdrawn, but then the the email actually said they actually. Would like a lesser amount.
We have a placeholder of a thousand dollars. It seems to me it was they were asking for.
In case, in case they need.
In case they need it. And then they were saying that what they were asking for, I believe, was that public works could do the purchasing for them so they can get a better rate. On the wood and uh. So I would move that we set aside a thousand dollars for Trailblazers.
That's second.
Yes.
All right.
They may well not draw that, but that would be a placeholder for.
All, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, Lions Bay Butterfly Project, I would move acceptance of seven hundred dollars with a fifty dollar in kind.
Okay, uh, second. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item.
Remembrance day ceremonies, five hundred dollars with the three hundred fifty dollar in kind request as well. Uh, I just, sorry, wait for a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, did I note that that this, it says setup and strike and uh. Similar to the seniors reporting the Lions Bay Community Scholarship Foundation, they both show setup and strike, but there's there's no staff time. No staff time used for that. They just do their own setup and they'll strike. So if it could just remove the setup and strike.
Okay.
There, because it's it's no, there's no staff time involved.
All right, all in favor?
I.
Yes.
Okay, opposed, motion carried.
King Lions Bay Historical Society, three hundred dollars.
Okay, uh, second.
So you look.
Discussion.
Oh, yes.
All in favor?
I am.
Opposed, carried. Next item.
Lions Bay Bird Friendly, uh, they've they've their three hundred dollar request has been removed, so it would be just a three hundred dollar in kind request.
And on a technical point, it's not just for using the whole, they use lots of different facilities.
That was the other request that would change.
For other facilities.
Yeah, they use all the facilities.
So hall renters, hall rental and facilities.
Okay, so we have a mover, a second.
I do.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, carried.
Okay, Lions Bay Sterling Team with support, uh, it's like I'm per, it's a hundred and forty. I believe I put, I blocked it out there, one forty five and forty in kind.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
I.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay, Lions Bay Garden Club, again, a hundred dollars sort of took them out for plants and things, I believe, and two twenty five in works time.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, carried.
Okay.
Next item.
Lions Bay Community Scholarship Foundation requesting two hundred and fifty dollars in kind use of the village of Branton Hall.
Okay, second. All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Okay, seniors' social circle, three thousand dollars in in kind use of lines of Branton Hall. And it's also has twenty four hall rentals, council chambers and office assistants, but it's all in kind. It's, so I moved the three thousand dollars in kind.
Okay, second.
Second.
I.
Discussion, all in favor?
I.
Opposed, carried.
Yeah. Similarly, Lions Bay Arts Council is simply asking for in kind use of uh Branton Hall. And uh they're also in setup and strike, I'm not sure whether they actually access uh. Works for that, I don't believe so.
Okay, so we have a second.
Anyway, it's.
So what was that, how much?
Two hundred dollars in kind.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
All in favor?
I.
Okay. Sorry, opposed, carried.
Yeah, I was on that, so.
Next item.
Okay, Lions, last one is Lions Bay Craft Group and um they're asking for two hundred and fifty dollars in in kind. Uh, hall rental. And I would support that.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
I.
Opposed, carried, uh, next item.
That's it.
Okay, we've got the whale sounds, uh, we can touch on that.
Uh, I I'm.
The house sound.
House sound revival, that's cool, yeah.
House sound revival, yeah. Uh, two young people spoke the last last council meeting. And they were asking for three thousand dollars on reach.
And a hundred dollars in kind, yeah.
Um, do we have a motion for that? Then we can have discussion.
How much was it?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
And in kind?
Okay, we have a motion, Counsel Robyn.
Kind.
Uh, second. Okay, I'll second it, uh, discussion.
Um, I think at at this point, um. There there is sort of seeking venture capital, I mean, they're looking to involve other other groups as well. Um, I I a hundred and ten percent in support of this, but but I'm just um concerned. About the amount of of funds involved, the uh, I think it's 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 not specifically within the mandate of of. Village of Lions Bay, I'm an absolute absolute advocate of of house sound and and uh certainly. Yeah, uh, but I just think there's probably alternate ways of of funding this, I think it's an outstanding idea. And uh but but at this point, um, you know, I spoke uh quite quite strenuously about about um. Tax increases and so on and and over three thousand dollars, three thousand, well, in kind, I guess it's a hundred, but three thousand dollars is is about um. One fifth of one percent of our of of uh protect uh of in terms of tax increase, so I just, I I can't uh. As much as I support the concept, I can't see it as a uh. I don't want to grant it this time.
Uh, Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, it was me, help counsel this deliberation, if it's the amount. That is a concern, if you direct this back to staff, staff can have further conversations to see if there's a different amount amount that they. Be inclined to propose that we could bring back from counsel's consideration. This is really important.
Okay, um, I I I believe in discussions with this uh couple that it it's. Going to be, I think they're shooting for the spire, so they're they're looking at raising fifteen thousand, I believe, um, I think the project's very worthy, it's uh. Um, you know, it's it basically be all one of a kind, uh, taking into account all the sounds of the whales and the sea life and this and that. I mean, how sound, but I tend to agree with Counsel Robyn that three thousand is a lofty figure. Uh, I think though, uh, with a group like this, if they're very motivated and they're volunteers and they're willing to go up and raise money. Uh, maybe a a a smaller amount, but subject to them raising the initial. Uh, if they're raising, if if the target is ten thousand, fifteen thousand, perhaps they they need to raise the initial funds and then. And then we support them uh with a lesser amount. So but uh I think uh Mr. Blackwell's suggestion to let staff sort of work through those details, I think is a good one, any other comments?
I'm suggesting giving staff any further guidance on the room that?
So if counsel was so minded to sort of explore whether there's any degree of flexibility in the amount. I would recommend defeating the motion that's on the table, which is to grant this amount, the feedback motion and you can either. Make a motion, pre- present a motion to to ask staff, or just ask staff. To have that conversation, explore if there are other alternative amounts that that staff can bring to counsel's consideration.
Okay, Counsel Robyn.
Um. My concern, and I think what I'm hearing in the room is. Um, it's like we've been asked to provide some seed money for something that doesn't really have a plan, I think we want to be supportive of this. But would not be better for them to come back with a finalized plan um and then see where we need to help or how we get to provide assistance. I think it's a good idea, um, nice project. I I do question whether it's the purpose of these kind of grants and the fact that it doesn't, you don't know, it's fifteen thousand dollars they're gonna need to raise or what it is. Um. Seems it seems a little unusual for these kind of grants.
Yeah.
And Counsel Robyn?
I I I mean, I'd be supportive of some some in kind uh funding in terms of if they need. To bring bring a group together in Branton Hall to share the concept or something like that. Uh, I certainly be comfortable with that, but I just don't, I don't see the seed capital venture.
We have, we have contributors to other organizations, House Sound Vice, for example, in cash and kind. Um, we've got these kind of organizations going, but they seem to have a better finalized plan than we actually get what we are buying into, so that's skewed.
So I'll work with counsel, I'll work with staff, come back with another plan, just a suggestion, but. So Blackwell.
That would be my recommendation, if counsel is interested in the idea, but concerned about the amount. Uh, then as I say, uh, if you direct ask staff, I don't even need a reservation to have further discussions with these folks to see. Just go this out a little bit more, bring back some more detail, uh, and and the counsel can, it doesn't matter that. If that's a route the counsel wishes to go, you need to defeat the motion.
So we'll call a question, all in favor? Those opposed? Okay. Who voted defeated? All right, any other items on this?
If I could just get that direction, if counsel wanted to do that.
Okay, um, do you need that in a motion?
No, it'll just, just.
Well, my feeling is uh. Give them a phone call, find out if there's any any further plan, any more details and. You know, counsel's interested in in supporting this, but just doesn't have enough information and and perhaps the three thousand was a little. Completely rich.
Perhaps if they want some in kind support with that one.
Can that sort of consensus of counsel?
Any other?
True.
Okay.
Okay, staff will have a discussion with that, counsel's great consideration.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we'll move on to item number eight, uh, staff reports, item eight eight eight. S A P, uh, over to Mr. Robyn.
Well, I think it's actually Joe. No, no, no.
Okay.
Just just one point before before, then we have an on table report, it's different to the one that we're looking at in the package. Great.
Uh, Mr. Jerkoff, you handed this up right at the beginning of the meeting?
Yep.
Uh, okay, we're we're gonna ask you to explain whatever it is, Jerk, just give us some background.
Could we take that two minutes break?
And uh we'll take a quick recess for two minutes.
One minute, maybe?
Well, we'll take a couple minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Blackwell.
Eighty one recess.
Our hardest times to, our right is turn.
This is a recurring theme.
I'm my, I can choose. Just kidding. Just drag that regardless.
Okay, uh, we're back, thank you.
Motion assembled for me.
Just to jerk off over you to explain the hand up you gave.
Sure, so as part of the regular council meeting package, um, there was a staff report regarding the funding for the Albert's Flyout Invitation Project, uh, here in April, called ASAP. Um, in the package, it was recommendation that the funding come from existing reserves. Um, as at the time, um, it was my understanding that um through discussions with the municipal finance authority. That available funding through um bylaw five oh eight had expired, as it's been over a five year term. Um, and I essentially had no access to that, uh, Counselor Abbott, um, was kind enough to point out um a twenty twenty one. Um, bylaw that was adopted by council for short term or temporary financing. Um, with the stipulation that any financing underneath this um temporary financing be in. Uh, in accordance with the master plan finance contemplated by the uh bylaw five oh eight financing. So, um, what the revision is in this on table um staff report is that um uh. The recommendation by staff is that a short term financing be applied for uh from the M F A to fund the project. Um, I outlined that um, so the amount posed, uh, you know, but for the ASAP project, it's seven hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. Um, the existing bylaw, uh, six oh five. Um, as of right of borrowing amounts not exceeding one point nine million, so there is certainly enough amount there. I have contacted the municipal finance authority and they have advised that um. Uh, all we would need to do to access this financing is provide a certified bylaw, um, and updated debt servicing liability certificate. And um, uh, just to load a one page application for this uh these funds. So I guess in my opinion, or my recommendation, um, this is the preferred option as um the short term plans would carry interest at the weekly produce rates, uh, prescribed rates by M F A. Um, the current rate is um five point four three percent. That being, uh, which is resulting in interest of thirty nine thousand per year or thirty two hundred per month. That being said, these rates change, um, recent news from the Bank of Canada is they are uh cutting rates, uh, there was the first cut shortly, it's a while ago. And this trend is expected to continue, so our variable rate on uh this uh short term debt financing would continue to decrease. And I would recommend that as a long term strategy, um, in accordance with an investment plan that I'm hoping that um counsel will adopt. That um I would be able to put funds that are in our reserves into uh G I Cs. Um, the current rates that my banking institutions are offering for a one year cash flow G I C is five point six percent. So effectively, we could be making money on borrowing money from the M F A. Um, so international, those are the changes, um, and the recommendation for staff is that we pursue your short term financing.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, we've got a few questions, discussion points, um. So first of all, when I look at uh. Director of Operations, the seven hundred and twenty one thousand was in the virtual budget, we thought we had a, we had a plan, between you and I, some back and forwards. Um, and I was hoping, expecting that we would save somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars with less of the electrical um power line. Upgrade required, is that still the case, or what is the actual budget now?
Um, thank you through the chair, so yes, we do expect to pay less for electrical service because. I am pleased to be able to advise counsel, we are going with option B on a project. Which entails running the pipeline from the intake first to the Ocean View tank. And then using existing electricity there to pump up to the plant. There was, there was quite a a lot of discussion around if there was a suitable pump available, there is two stage pump. Which apparently civil engineers never heard of, um, there was, there's still waiting a visit from B C Hydro inspector. The long and the short of it is, uh, we will not have to run power up to the Alberta intake anymore, which was a cost of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We also saved significant money on uh the structural requirements to put a new tank up there. On the other hand, uh, the work to do the intake is gonna be a little bit more than we thought, because we're actually gonna have to build some sort of access road in there. Which entails scarfing away quite a bit of unstable cliff, uh, and and hauling it out so it doesn't fall into the creek. Uh, we're also gonna have to do a little bit of extra work that that wasn't anticipated, we're gonna add some length to the pipeline, about a hundred and sixty meters. I'd like to keep that powder dry and keep the project budget at seven hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. Um, I hope to come in well under it, but I'd like I'd like to have the additional contingency. So I would request that that the approved budget remains as it is.
When do you expect to have a funding estimate?
Well, we just, uh, I, the reason I was late for getting here at six was we were we were having a pretty significant technical discussion around what was required. The costing, should have some costing by Friday, um, I just heard today, for example, that. Plan B one is to actually, if if we cannot get the, if we cannot get B C Hydro to uh play ball on the power. What we're gonna do is run the plant on its own generator for the six weeks that the project will be running. And use the power that was running the plant for the new system, so you know, that's that's fallback position. Because we don't want to have generated noise at the Ocean View tank, because it's too close to residences, so you know, with that level of technical discussion. Um, we we also uh heard from um the structural engineer at the consultants that. He was not prepared to sign off on a suspension cable suspended from trees, even though it's done all the time in Canada, he sits in Denver, he's never heard of that before. Um, luckily, we found a sub consultant who will actually. Luckily, we found a sub consultant who will actually seal the drawing with, with an engineer to issue polls and guys. That was happening in the last couple of hours. So that's going to cost a little bit more than, than the, the tree guide, um. I brought process, for example. So. To answer the question, late this week, early next week, I should have a revised custom. And then, uh. I suspect it will come significantly lower, uh, if you want me to speculate fifty thousand lower. Um, but. Rather than, uh, go back and revise the, the cost estimate without instant basis to do so. Uh, what I suggest is the council, um, approves the, the recommendation from the F O. And, uh, how we'll actually find it is draw on cash reserves and then fund the, the, the reserve draw with the loan when the time comes. So the, the loan, am I right, Joe? Uh, the loan, we won't actually be executing on the loan until the project's pretty much delivered. And they will know exactly how much you need for.
So we, we decided how to fund, we're not deciding with the numbers.
Correct. And, um, uh. America, um, the, uh, you know, on, on short term temporary financing, um, we can repay the principal, so we'll be overdraft. Stay back.
I was gonna ask you a question about the term and stuff in a minute.
Um.
Okay, I think that answers it. So this Denver engineer has a B C stamp?
Actually, no, we're not gonna do that. But luckily.
So it's like you need to set the engineer.
Yeah.
Maybe I.
He's apparently seventy five and still does field work. Perfect.
Nice, yeah.
So is this something you're going to bring, uh, just to finalize the, the, uh, refine the, the bike? Um, before, uh, the infrastructure committee on Thursday potentially, um, is this something? Uh, that you would come back to council or what? What?
No, I, I would suggest the budget has been approved. I, I'm not going to need any more, uh, I may need less, but I'd like to preserve that budget. What's before you now is how funded.
Yeah, we can discuss the infrastructure committee, so he's meeting maybe outside of this.
If I have anything, uh, any, any new numbers, yeah, sure, happy to. But I don't have anything now.
Mm-hmm. Can you just?
All right. It's a simple discussion, yeah. Something, anything dramatic, we can always call a, a special meeting.
Yeah.
Back together in short notice.
I, I frankly, I, I hope and expect that the project will come in under what council's approved today.
Okay, one, we can talk about the destruction, maybe we should respond to that meeting anyway. And then other reasons. Okay, um. Okay, so I'm good with all those, with those of the technical, so, okay, so Joey, my question for you. Um, well, first of all. I think that there's a statement here that's not quite accurate. And that is that. We didn't approve this. In the five year plan. But we did.
The ASAP project? That wasn't in the capital centers budget? Or mean, uh, budget?
I need to keep, we finish that thought. In the, in the, in the, in the capital budget, we approved, first of all, we had the highway tank. And then we said, didn't think that's what we're going to need. And then we provided the water contingency project, whatever it would turn out to be. Because we weren't quite sure if this was going to be the way to go. And then it's in the budget.
So, um, Mary.
Got nine hundred.
That's fair, um, it was my understanding that that potential could be marked for other items in different areas of the village. However, if I, uh, would defer to, uh, Mr. Burr, if that is the intention to use the funds out of the nine hundred thousand dollars that are already approved for ASAP. Fair enough, then I can revise the, uh, recommendation.
Yeah, my expectation, and then with my expectations, we are not going to include another seven hundred thousand on top of the nine hundred.
Uh, remind me, the nine hundred was specifically among for water shortage issues?
Issues. Yeah, I think we call it the water contingency. Yeah. Fund because we're trying to work out what we're gonna do.
Um.
Who's a placeholder?
Yeah.
Just five dollars longer. But it was funded in the budget.
It's funded at nine hundred.
Yep. Um. Yes, that, that's true, um. And I'd forgotten about that because I've always had in mind that that would one day, the, the contingency would want to be used to replace the highway tank. Which is got an acronym now, you might be interested to know what it is. It's H I T A. Highway tank. Something, something, I don't remember actually, sorry. Um, but it's called H I T A. Um, but yeah, so I mean, this would be, uh, right in the sweet spot of the, of the nine hundred thousand dollar contingency. Uh, and funded, uh, uh, how we funded the budget.
Yeah, so is there any budget?
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just need to decide whether we want to do it like that.
Yes, it's a question of how we want to do it. So, and then my question was here. Um. Can't remember exactly, I'm gonna quickly, how much, um, debt we, we financing at the moment? And at what point it drops off and drops off means, we want some stuff coming expiring, right?
Um, see the, so five oh eight, uh, issuance was the larger one, um, that comes off in, uh. I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's not like next year, it's a few years from now at least. Um, what we do, I can speak to is our debt servicing liability currently, uh, with interest and personal repayments. Um, our debt service costs are approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, they, uh, the debt service liability, uh, certificate is based on, um, basically guaranteed unconditional revenue earned by the, uh, municipality. Um, and going through that, um, our debt servicing, uh, liability would be, um, about one point two five million dollars. So we can borrow.
A lot.
A lot more, yes.
Okay.
And, and I guess the, uh, one I'd like to just remind council, though, then hopefully prioritize for next council meeting is, um, to approve the, um, investment policy that was proposed back in November. Um, so that, that can put in some money and effectively hedge any debt borrowing and possibly, um, generate more interest income than the interest for paying on borrowing.
Okay.
So why don't we bring that forward at the next meeting? Okay, in regard to this, are we already budgeted then?
Uh, effectively, yes, uh.
So we already, yeah, we already budgeted.
Yeah.
And now that we're taking the loan, we're actually looking more positive in the budget.
Yes.
Then we can, we can let it clarify and resolve that the next budget cycle, which we were told is coming soon.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell, do we need a motion to, uh, um. Use of oral power on this?
I just think we, we do because it's.
No, okay, so there was, that was what. So that temporary borrowing by law, what it did was, it allowed us to continue to protect this borrowing, uh, approval we got from the referendum up to that value. And all it meant, and I'm going back to that, but it required a resolution of council rather than going back to do a referendum. That's what it effectively did. So I would suggest if on these options, if we go with the staff option, the resolution, the motion should be to approve the staff recommendation to finance ASAP. We're drawing borrowing available, assumed by number six oh five twenty twenty one is all you need.
You're absolutely right, what I was referring to, if you took it from cash reserves, you don't need a motion. If you want to borrow, go through a loan, then you're gonna get in this motion.
So again, the ball, so get the ball going, I'll put forward that motion as I just read it very quickly.
Okay, uh, do we have a second? Second, okay, uh, councillor second, any further discussion?
Can I just understand?
Yeah.
How, how is that nine hundred thousand currently proposed to be funded? That's through taxation and draws on reserves.
You have draws on reserves.
So this is as an alternative to draws on reserves?
Yes, we didn't. No place for borrowing.
So this is an extra seven hundred thousand dollars on top of the budget?
Effectively, yes. But we are paying interest on it, but if I can invest and I'm paying, we're paying interest.
Yes, it's, it's actually, yeah, positive, yeah.
Yeah. Highway tank.
Well, my only pro comment would be if we can bring these a little bit earlier, uh, we would have an opportunity to put this in front of our audit and finance committee and get their feedback. Uh, prior to coming to council. I think in the future, if we can, if we can bring these a little bit earlier, that'll be helpful.
Excellent.
Okay, any other comments? Or call a question? Okay, all in favor?
Just fine.
Poked. There you go. Okay, um. Next item is the annual report, that is eight, eight, two. And let's black out over to you.
I think I was happy doing, I was gonna ask, so Mr. Jerkoff was the author of this report largely, did you want to? This is well before my time.
Um, if I may.
Yeah.
This is background, so the, uh, the report went through, uh, four versions, um, uh, incorporated, uh, any comments from, uh, councillors of it, uh, right, everybody had a chance to opine on it. Um, it was, um, uh, circulated, uh, and published on a website about a month ago, uh, for public comment. Um, we did have one, um, that I'm aware of, uh, uh, email, uh, per connotation by, um, uh, Mr. By Mayor. Uh, however, uh, let's present it here is not altered in any way from what's the posted website or had been sent to council previously. Um, after incorporating before posting website councils comments. And then, so that's, that's it, this, uh, this incorporate.
You said it's not, has not been changed from the one that was posted.
That's correct. Um, the annual report, uh, incorporates the comments from, uh, the mayor, from councillors, from, uh, public works, from the fire department, from E O C. I, it, uh, it is a comprehensive document, uh, and, um, its format is, um, largely the same as in prior years. Uh, there's no real surprises here, um, and there's been ample time to come here, to count, uh, comment upon it, uh, this was initially crafted in. November or October. Um, but anyways, um, yes, so that in a nutshell is, uh, what I have to say with the annual report. Um, I leave it to you to decide, Mr. Blackwell.
Just, uh, final point, uh, just so council was on the same page. This is a statutory requirement, is that local government, uh, prepare now, uh, yeah, annual report. That they make it available two weeks prior to consideration. And that consideration can happen at a council or any other meeting. Which is a curious, curious language. Uh, no, this does not have to be adopted, council just simply is required to consider. Uh, which doesn't mean anything, uh, much in my, I mean, there's no way to measure. The degree in which it was considered, so as long as council's considered it, um, all the statutory obligations are complied with.
Okay, any comments?
We don't have to receive it or any.
Then make sure you consider it. Ends up who was considered.
I'm just kidding.
Any comments by councils?
Yeah.
Councillor.
Oh, pause the comment, um. Uh, it's not used to anyone, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the mayor's message. Um, that, there's one sentence in twenty twenty two and it goes directly to twenty twenty three. And I get, that's the report is from the twenty twenty two council, which I was there for the entire twelve months. Even in this chamber now, I'm there for two months. Um, it was, and another council was there for ten months. And I don't believe that mayor's message represents, um, that, that year and that council at all. Um, and it says it's on behalf of council and I guess we don't get to decide how this goes out. Um, but I want to make it quite clear that I do not believe that is on behalf of council. Certainly does not represent the council that I knew in twenty twenty two. I'd like to see that removed on behalf of council.
Okay, um. I'll just respond since you're, uh, since it is a mayor's got, uh, luck, I put it together, uh, there's many of the events or subsequent events. Uh, but, you know, there was important changes that happened early in our term and, and those changes were banking and financial controls. Uh, so, uh, I highlighted those and, uh, I make no apologies for them. Uh, so that's, uh, if, that's a letter from the mayor, that's what I put forward. If we, if we want it from the mayor, I'm fine with it from the mayor as opposed to, uh, in, in regards to the council. I have no problem with that. Uh, Mr. Blackwell. Uh, Mr. Blackwell's got his hand up, then we'll go to you, Mr. Councillor. Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you through you the council, so standard practice is that there is a, uh, message, uh, from the mayor on behalf of council. It's, it should be somewhere beyond the year that it's referring to. Um. That is council matter, I could opine on that, if council wish, that's a, that's a, that's up to the, the staple to decide, not for me to say. But it is standard to have that in there, so I would not recommend pulling it out. Uh, then maybe if council, one or more councilmen are sort of a little reluctant with regard to dates in there, maybe there's the opportunity to reach out. And, uh, could work collaboratively, collaboratively to see if some of those wrinkles can be smoothed out. So that, uh, there's a bit more consensus on this. Uh, I would also go further to say that it's quite common to have. A letter in there or noted there from the C A O. And then even larger jurisdictions, they go through the backing orders, there's a whole bunch of, the director of this and that, the next thing. So I don't know if that helps.
They're not.
Counselor. I'm sorry, uh, councillor, uh.
Or sorry, councillor right. I'm sorry, councillor problem?
Yeah, thank, uh, so far we're considering the A P here, I think we've received, uh, one comment on it that, uh, I would echo. Um, it seems to me, and I agree with Neville here, that it doesn't really, it, it in no way, the mayor's message reflects any, any, in, in no way, shape or form reflects, uh, my point of view on this. Um, and I don't think it, uh, captures, uh, the twenty twenty events of twenty twenty two. I, I would prefer to see the mayor's message removed entirely and just to keep it, uh, simple. But certainly at a minimum, uh, I would not want to see that as being representative of, uh, council in any way, shape or form.
Okay, councillor problem?
Uh, I think we have considered this, we've looked at it, um, two councillors have weighed in in terms of their feelings about it, and I think we should move on. I, I think you've registered your concern and, and I think it's a staff report. And let's move on, we've got twenty twenty three report to get done.
Okay, uh, councillor, before we move on.
Yeah, one last thing, um. I'm not suggesting that I can speak for the council, it's not present tonight, um, but I did submit a version of a mayor's message. Whether it was in consultation with councillor Canada, that we both felt was twenty twenty two. So, you know, I cannot speak for it, I think she was here, she would agree.
Okay, uh, once again, it's a mayor's message, I'm putting it forward, uh, two thousand twenty two, uh, the biggest changes there, of course, early in two thousand twenty three. Uh, were the, uh, motions to put in more stringent financial controls and banking controls that were not there in two thousand twenty two. So I make no apologies for my report and, uh. We've now heard from everyone and let's move over to staff and staff can make their decision on what they would like to do. It's a staff report, so. Okay, we'll move on to next item, which is eight, B, uh, one, and that is, uh, committees. Uh, and we'll move right to, uh, eight B one climate action committee minutes. Do we have a motion to approve April twenty second?
Yeah. So I think we're just, so you, you don't have to receive, this is just on there for information. And if the chair identifies anything in any of these minutes that, uh, chair feels, uh, that they want to. Bring to attention council, that's the time to do it. However, there may be nothing, we're just need to send it for information that is not that, we'll have to next time.
Okay, uh, any, any changes or comments?
To that, to that point, I can take any questions, um, if there are any. In my report, which follows, I have pulled that out of the past that I thought needed to be discussed to council. So council could just gloss over the minutes and that's why I'm there to text him, go to my report and ask me questions on the report, which is a problem that's coming.
Okay, uh, I'll just comment on eight, uh, B two, which is the infrastructure committee, uh, meeting minutes. Uh, one item that I think needs correcting, and that's on page forty three, and it's under the well waters, uh, discussion. And, uh, page forty three, uh, says that it was, I believe, the C A O or just the mayor that had a discussion with the drillers and hydrologists. And I'd just like to correct that, it was the mayor, the C A O and the public works manager. Uh, we had a discussion with the drilling company and also the hydrologists. And, uh, the next items were the mayor was going to follow up on, uh, with various staff, uh, in regards to health and safety and, and, uh, requirements. And I've referred that to staff to deal directly with, uh, the staff from the various, uh, organizations as opposed to the mayor at a political level. Going and reaching out, I don't mind reaching out to, uh, my political counterparts, uh, at the province, uh, but I think it's staff's responsibility to look after this. Uh, well water from this point forward, so I just correct that, uh, once again, it was the mayor, the C A O and the works manager who were present for the discussion. So I just correct that, uh, once again, it was the mayor, the C A O and the works manager who were present for the discussion.
Good.
Yeah.
Um, so I purposely haven't put the draft minutes for the next meeting in here. I only put the approved minutes. So what does council do here? Um, can council now revise and approve committing minutes? I mean, they were, they were approved in the committee.
Um, I didn't approve those. I actually had made reference that that needed to be corrected, that it was the C A O, the mayor and the works, uh, manager, and that was Carl Burr, were present on a telephone call with the, uh, well drilling companies and also hydro.
I checked the wrong minutes, the wrong.
Uh, I'm not sure, but that's just being correct. I just don't think that we should by all in asking for it, just to change after reflect what actually took place. Mr. Blackwell.
Well, the conversation moved on past, so it's, it's, I'll just, I'll say.
It's the committee who should make the changes.
Correct. These are, these are committees minutes.
Yes, I have to take it back to the committee. Yes, we'll bring it back to the committee. We'll revise, take it back to the committee.
Give it to you for information.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good. Okay, um, counsel problem?
Just, just a comment. Um, um, it, it seems that there's quite a number of communities along the corridor who are drilling and who are using well, well water. And, uh, it seems to me that that pre- precludes us having to, um, water filtration. Is that right? So, um, um, uh, it's going to be really interesting. I'll, I'll keep a shirt by on what's going on with, with alternatives. You'll have more information on this than I, but not necessarily is the short answer. Okay, okay. Thank you. But that's subject to, it looked like a, a ten million dollars saving on, on filtration.
Possibility is if, if depending on how deep you drill, uh, the possibility is that it minimizes filtration. Uh, the other, um, bonus is that if there is a surface event, a wildfire, uh, we can still draw from that. Those levels. So otherwise, um, yeah, any type of creep.
Diversification maybe may make some sense.
Yeah, I think as, um, most of us that are talking now, the committee was going to review the long-term plan and the various options, including drilling. We haven't done that yet. It was meant to be Thursday night. I'm not sure if we're going to do it Thursday night because we haven't got updated reports and I don't know. I, I think we might want to take a little while longer to send it off. But I will discuss that. Send an email.
Might be worth delaying just then.
Yeah. So, but that whole option of wells, everything from a D cell plant to a pipeline all the way to Metro, whether they give us any water or not, I'm not sure. All of those things are, are meant to be part of that next more strategic review. So we, we will get to those in the end of the discussions and jingles.
Okay, uh, Mr. Blackwell.
I would probably agree with that. Uh, council may have observed in the media today comments from the premier with regard to cost overruns, which may have implications for Metro's ability to provide water to Lionsby, even if that was, was on the table. Well, to themselves though. It's a three billion dollar cost over run is, uh, the concern.
Yeah. Well, okay, uh, item eight, uh, B three was struck, uh, noise and safety. And we'll move to item C, uh, council report, page forty-eight. And, uh, counselor out. Did you have anything to add on that?
Okay, so, um, I'll just, there was one formal recommendation from the committee. It came to the special meeting, as you're aware of, uh, this week about the ASAP project. So that's just in the report here. On, um, I was asked to, um, workshop manager, sorry. Can't remember which title, no. Directive operations.
The operations.
It was much easier than I could just call it public works manager. But anyway, directive operations. Um, I'll talk to him afterwards, but it was a request that we get access to the twenty fifteen water supply tank full-time. Data reports. I think that's still outstanding. Carl's aware of all of these. Um, and the rest, just, uh, for the information, mention, uh, mention, I think, I think the rest of the stuff on the I C is just for information. You guys read the report. Just gives you a flavor for where, where we're going. Um, on the climate action committee, um, we have a few actions that, uh, I'm kind of working through. I might need some help with. Um, one was the L G cap report, um, Joe's left, but we, we're working on that, providing him some information. And we still haven't got this previous carrot report data. I'll talk to Joe about that. Um, then what I did want to update council was on the mini recycling, um, depot. So, uh, the, the new committee member, Andrew Reyes, is going to take that on as the C S P project. I have been talking to Carl. We need to hand this over to staff at some point. We will understand that. Um, but kind of, we still have a little more knowledge than he has on it. So we still kind of working through that. Um, clearly still wants to, hopes to have that happen this year. End of summer might be more reasonable goal given where we are now. Um, and I think it's got larger to approval so far, but obviously we'll come back to council once it's finalized. So that's just the updates on that one. And, yeah, I think that's all.
Okay, so we'll receive that report. Uh, no motion required. Blackwell.
Were we actually receiving or are you just?
Yeah.
Sorry. Oh, um, sorry about that. Um. No, they're received when you adopt it. Oh, you don't have to receive them a second.
Alright. Okay, uh, next item is, uh, we'll, we'll write through resolution.
No, uh, sorry, it's, uh, we moved eight B C, council report, be my report.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, um, I just refer you to page, uh, forty-six of the agenda. And that's the observations of the highway noise group. Uh, the highway noise group is not a, not an official committee, pardon me. And, uh, coun- both counselor, Kamla and myself are invited to observe their meetings. Um, unfortunately, counselor Kamla's had a car challenge and wasn't able to make, make the, the June third meeting, but, um, the, the, uh, uh, they provided the, the meeting notes, uh, which I'm sharing here with council. Um, and essentially I'll just very quickly hit a, hit a couple of points here, but, um, Byron Montgomery was, uh, was chairing the meeting and did a wonderful job. Um, and that's a list of, uh, uh, those in attendance and those who were unable to, to attend there. Uh, first of all, uh, quiet pavement is going ahead. Uh, this summer, so the South Town Lane will be done and that was, the information was shared. I think it's been shared with council previously as well. There was concern though that the, um, that it's being done, you know, fifteen years after it was originally done and, and its life expectancy is ten years. So we're hoping that, that, uh, that'll happen more quickly. Uh, speed enforcement discussion about, uh, working closely, more closely with the R C N P. Uh, and I'll, I'll deal with these in just a moment and, and in the final item here. Uh, Modi contact, um, again, some notes on, on, uh, information to do with Ministry of Transport and Highway and, and infrastructure, I should say, where there's, uh, concern about the, uh, the maintenance contract is coming up. And, uh, we want to make sure that the, um, the maintenance level of the quiet pavement is, is in there and, and secured. So that was a concern of the group. Uh, sound barriers, again, incredible concern about, about sound levels coming off the highway. And whether there's anything, you know, new in technology with, with the sound barriers. Um, there's some questions about that. Now essentially, um, a lot of these matters should be referred to staff and staff should, should, would, would pursue them and, and, and the, uh, name of the village and so on. But, and, and, but, uh, there is, uh, energy. Uh, different members of, of this group are willing to, uh, be in discussions with, uh, would, would be in formal discussions, be it with the R C N P, be it with Ministry of Transport and I, I was just as concerned residents. Uh, this would not be a, a council function per se, but they would keep council, council informed of, of how they were doing with that.
Counselor Bronman, just, uh, uh, Mr. Blackwell put his hand up here and should, he has something down, so.
Absolutely.
Blackwell.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Through you. It's important for everyone to remember that when, when, when community members are dealing with the R C P or any other sort of local government entity, they will not share very much information. So there's a protocol associated. There's the protocols that they're, they don't. Other than superficially, they won't share. So if they are expecting sort of significant feedback, it's not likely to be forthcoming. Uh, and they would be better, better off if they were to provide their questions or, or whatever to staff, for staff to, to give a more robust response. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselor.
Yeah. Okay, that, that's very helpful. And in, in terms of, of our other discussion on staffing and, and time available and so on, I'm just saying that they're, they, they did indicate that there's, you know, they have energy and, and interest in, in anything that they can do. They're certainly willing to cooperate and not looking to override in any way, but, but to, uh, assist. Okay, so, and that, that's, um, that, that's important. So anyway, the, uh, the item is, uh, provided to council for information.
Okay. Okay, uh, and was there a comment or potential resolution on, uh, our opinion?
That's in, under your, your business.
Okay, I need to cover that off.
Yeah, thank you. It was, it was unclear where it was going.
Didn't want to forget about that.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you very much. That's just my council report.
Alright, uh, we'll move, uh, right to item, uh, new bus- new business, item number ten. We'll go back to counsel.
Just to confirm if I could, there's no, there's no information under item D, nor is there any information under item nine.
Correct.
Okay, so nothing from emergency, nothing from resolution. Okay, uh, under new business, um, uh, Mr. Mayley attended the meeting earlier this evening and asked if there's any questions. He's doing an, uh, his ask is that, uh, in light of his daughter's wedding on August thirty-first, that, uh, that council, uh, provide per- permission for him to use the Kelvin Grove parking lot. Um, initially, uh, he, he approached me and asked how, how he would pursue this. I spoke to the, um, C A O who referred me to the director of operations who said, basically, you need to bring this to council and Mr. Mayley should write a letter, which he did. And, uh, so it's before council at this point. So at this point, I'm suggesting the resolution that the, the, this motion that the Kelvin Grove parking lot be allocated for the sole use of Mr. Mayley on August thirty-first. And that, uh, Mr. Maybe would provide a payment of five hundred dollars of, for rental of the Kelvin Grove parking lot for that date.
Okay, do we have a second?
Before you do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, would you like to clean that up again? Yeah, whatever is the money. Uh, I wouldn't necessarily suggest that is necessarily the correct number. There's a daily amount. So, I think it's twenty-four hour dollars a day in the fees by law. So if it's a day-long rental, it would be twenty-four times whatever stalls. So it would be, the resolution would need to say, reflect that it be, that there be a cash payment that is consistent with the fees by law.
Okay, we're, uh, Mr. Mayley also talked about working with staff on that because he may not need it. I think the, the wedding starts at four, four P M. So there might be something that he works out with staff, uh, to allow the public to use the parking prior to the meeting and so on. Uh, can we keep it more general to? Yeah.
Yeah, uh, we, we, staff absolutely will work with him on this. Um, there can be problems trying to get people out. Uh, if you let them in, it can be hard to get them out, especially at the end of August where, what I would expect park to have heavy usage. So I suspect it would be practical to ensure that if he's seeking a significant number of stalls, that to be to ensure that he's able to secure those. They need, they may need to be secured right from.
Right now.
From the pictures.
Okay.
Yeah, so rather than specify the amount, specify in accordance with the fees by law, and we can figure out whatever that is. If it's one hour, twelve hours, we will, we will use the, the, uh, the formula set out with the fees by law.
Alright. Okay, do you want to read that motion one more time, counsel?
Okay, uh, okay, that the Kelvin Grove parking lot be allocated for the sole use of Mr. Kim Mayley. Uh, uh, and we actually excluded the, um, the two, uh, handicap parking spots from that. Uh, that the Kelvin Grove parking lot, it's with the exclusion of the handicap parking spots, uh, be allocated for the sole use of Mr. Kim Mayley, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, for payment to be determined by staff or by.
In accordance with.
In accordance, in accordance with the fees, fees by law.
Okay, do we have a second for that motion? Alright, I'll second that. Okay, discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got a question on.
Okay, counsel writer?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, if this is going to, I, I'd like to see the resident and or handicap parking spot, uh, remain reserved for residents. Um, and then I also anticipate, I'm hearing about staff involvement. Um, and I don't know if we're going to be talking about barriers or monitoring or whether staff are going to have to travel in from their homes, uh, on a weekend. And I presume that that will also, uh, produce costs. I'm wondering how that's being addressed, the staff costs associated with this request.
I believe Mr. Mayley had offered to, uh, to supervise, uh, the parking and also have someone there. But I think he'll work with staff, but Mr. Blackwell.
My expectation of a situation like this is that you'll have one of our parking and park patrol, whatever the name is. People, uh, that's, that's, thank you.
Yeah.
So, okay, will, will then, will the cost of the time then be recouped from Mr. Mayley? I mean, that was the question.
Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. So, um, my expectations there would be, depending on what the formula looks like at the time when, when the parking lot's getting needed and so forth, I could see it being as simple as cloning it off. And then that would be it.
Well, no, I mean, attendance.
And I.
They're not.
No, 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 please, they'll be providing the attendance. And I think it may well be that we need to provide special parking photocopy parking passes so we know who's who in the parking lot. Just for coverage. So the, these are operational issues.
Sure.
Yeah. I think these are operational things. I think this is consistent with the other areas of the village. When they're filming, they set off areas. Uh, certainly, uh, we've had multiple weddings in the village. Uh, Lionsby Avenue has had alternate parking, angle parking for the fire day each year, um, and so on. So that it's, it's not.
Okay. Any other comments before we call the question?
Um, no, I did look at the fees by all the time and I, and I calculated it on the three dollars per hour. He was about in the right price range. So I've got a feeling on the full day, um, that he, he was asking for thirty-five. Suppose not too easy time.
So, yeah, we'll have to figure it out.
So you have to figure it out. So it might not be far away. Could be.
Oh, okay. I just want it to be on record that we're not just randomly picking a number out of the air because we have no legal authority to do that. What I'm trying to do for the record is tie that, the cost to something, which is the fee by law. And then it's legitimate.
Good. All in favor?
I.
Yes.
Okay, opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh.
It's too full today, by the way.
Uh, okay, we'll move to, there is no item eleven bylaws. Uh, we'll move to item number twelve correspondence. And that would normally fall on, I believe that's counselor Kamla was not present today. Um, Counselor Bronman, you had looked after this last time. You want to address this?
I'm sorry, I was.
Listen, correspondence.
Correspondents. Then we got him the next council on rotation.
Okay, uh, did, is that yourself, Counselor?
Actually, fortunately, I think it's. My recognition is.
Received with regard to.
That, that would, that would be me. Um, but since I'm not in the room, uh, perhaps I might, uh, hand it off to, I guess, the next counselor in rotation. And that would be Neville, if you're prepared to do that.
Well, I guess I can volunteer myself.
Okay, Mr. Blackwell.
My suggestion of these things is, uh, For efficiency purposes, only those pieces of correspondence that need to be raised and discussed or considered or brought to attention to council. Need to be discussed, everything else is just simply there for information. The expectations council will review correspondence, but there may not be any action, in which case there doesn't need to be any comment on it.
All right, great, any, any items that would like to be highlighted by the councillors?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go. First of all. Let's put this in my email earlier, so we're now doing the RCMP report. And the fire dispatch reports into correspondence, whereas we used to have them in the actual, on the agenda.
They should be.
They're all future, beginning back to the main part of the agenda. Okay, so I think we should go, go look at that, just because they're now here, at least once you've seen them. The first two items of, there's a general correspondent, on general correspondence. The Lionsby bird friendly. Normally, resident groups and communities don't go into general correspondence, they go to resident correspondence. So I think that's another thing to consider, it's just not the way it has been done until now. I'd just like to comment on the Lionsby bird friendly, as known, fairly close to it. It's a great achievement that they not only renewed their designation, but actually leveled up. And the CEO had a comment, it was me telling the press release, thank you for that. So, yeah, kudos to them, well done. The next one's about the city of Kamloops and the fun they're having with their mayor. I won't do that one for fear of giving too much of a debate. Lionsby Events Committee celebration requirements, there's seem to be an S in there, as I recall. And, and the noise. Thought there was another S, does anyone else help me out?
I think a noise period?
Was it, wasn't noise there, was that the only ask?
Okay.
Okay, that's only yes, you jumped by that one. And then the, then the next one is, is the fire dispatch report. So I guess for, for the record, that would be moved up to main part of the agenda, I don't have any comments on it, but if anyone else does.
I think it should be in the regular agenda.
Okay, no one else have any comments on that, okay. The RCMP report. I think the first report is, it's fine, it's the one we normally get, the number of callouts. All looks good. Is there any else of any other comments, the circular report we got, I'm not sure it should be in this package.
I haven't had to repeat it.
I sent you, sent you an email to that, to that effect. Shouldn't be in the package, it should be redacted.
All right, any other comments?
No, nothing on that, and then there's various resident correspondence, I do want to talk about one of these, the first one. Is. Non-bombers comments about the budget. And so few reports, and when you expect to see them, take that on, on record. Second one was Kim Maylie, which we dealt with. The third one, and I'm kind of kicking myself, because I'm meant to bring this up during the earlier discussion. And I didn't, I have notes to that effect, so I swept up, and the earlier discussion I'm talking about is the ASAP. Now. Mr. Bomber sent a, spoke at the previous council meeting and suggested that he believes. That this would fall within that green grant. Right? The response was that, no, it couldn't, because we wouldn't get the grant anytime after the grant in advance. He's since written back and said, that it's not accurate if you read that grant, that you can actually apply after the fact. And I went and looked, and I think he's correct. So not only do I think he's correct, I think we can apply for a sixty percent, you could get a sixty percent grant here. Which would make this project really appealing. Also. We could get, you can get an additional ten percent if you're a small rural community. As we all know, we've recently, or. A few years ago, but now finally come through the process of becoming a rural community. And I think we should be looking to apply to Metro to allow us to be applying for grants as a rural community. So for the record, what happens? Is any rural community under a certain size, sometimes get a hundred percent grant, or in this case gets ten percent more. Exclusions are Metro and CRD. In case of the CRD, all these small communities happen to be islands, and they're part of the Islands Trust. So they are immediately able to apply as rural. In, in case of Metro, Bowen gets, gets passed it by the same reason, right? Then because they're part of Metro, sorry, they're part of the Islands Trust, so they can also apply as rural. We've never had this question before, because we were in the town, and now that we're outside of it. I think it's reasonable that we know different to Bowen, when in these other places, we should be giving the additional grant for it. In this case, it would be another ten percent.
All right, perhaps the, our staff can look into that, or are we give Mr. Bomber to do some more homework?
Well, I, I think, no, I think this needs to, staff and Ross is nodding his head to go forward, look at this.
All right, Mr. Blackwell, any comments?
No, we're certainly looking to this, and either way, we will report back to council on the outcome. One of the things that we might need to do, so we're better prepared to take advantage of all of the grants. Is look at securing a professional grant writer to help us out. So we can pick and choose and have these grants written as effectively as possible, not maximize our chances. Because of two reasons, A, I don't think any staff are trained to professional grant writers, two, this is such a low capacity.
That's not even on there with respect to this, but we might be able to tackle this, but we'll look into it.
My comment from previous councils, we tried this, and they failed every time. Grant writers never got any grants, all the grants we got, we done by the staff. Either between the, we work manager and financial officer, they did the grants, and those, and all ones without exception, we succeeded on, but done by them. The ones we used grant writers, we failed.
Did you get the grant writers? Okay.
The last one that does have an ask, is a resident that's written in about any various on noise, because she's having, having a party. From time to time residents do that, technically, everyone should do this, every time they're going to have a party, the best of ten, a lot of people don't, this person has. So I think we should at least acknowledge it and say, we grant it, and this council would like to tell them they can't have their party, can't best ten, that's my, that's what I would prefer.
Yeah, it seems like a very reasonable ask, except they will notify the neighbors and so on, so.
All right.
And normally, yeah, once again, not in the agenda.
Is this a, is this a motion that council is making?
Well, typically, these come in the actual part of the agenda when we approve it.
And this is on the fly, sort of, an unusual one?
Well, do we need a motion, or you just, can you just grant it?
In theory, but if we want to kind of keep it as official as possible. So it's, it's up to you guys.
Okay, I'll put the motion forward that, that we grant Carla Babcock, her request.
June twenty-ninth.
For June, June twenty-ninth. To exceed the noise by law past ten.
Standard, that would. It's always passed, I don't expect it to pass. Are we seeing?
What page is that on?
It's on the last change.
Sixty-seven, sixty-seven.
It will return.
It's a waiting party.
So, I mean, the.
Sorry, Marcus, I think you.
Breaking up there.
Oh, sorry. Just, just to be clear, should we build in a limitation, they want to go past ten P M and just give it a cutoff hour and then grant the exemption?
Mr. Blackwell.
The exemption, the cutoff is eight.
So are we, just to throw something in, are we now, anyone that's throwing a get-together? Going to have to come to council to get approval to invite people over to their houses, is that what we're looking for?
As, as I said, technically, according to, and as I said, technically, what I'm always violating, I suppose. Some people do, a lot of people don't, this person has, so in the very least, I would think we should not punish those in trying to follow the rules.
Mr. Blackwell.
So I, I, my suggestion is, these are murky waters, because. I don't want to sort of advertise it, turns out you don't need bylaw enforcement, people working at two o'clock in the morning. So by setting this up for failure, around one forty-five, two o'clock. No one's going to show up to show them that.
If people have a problem, they probably.
So it's a good, it's relying on good neighbor, positive neighbor, yeah. And it is what it is, sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, this sort of issue. Shall we just thank them for the letter?
Thank you, I'll thank them for their, my feeling is thank them for the letter, otherwise, we're now policing people's social functions. Of which we have bylaws to do that, we also have police.
Well, thank them for the minutes, the councillors' no objection to the name of the waiting for. Or something, can staff do that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, anything else that you have to say?
Thank you for your letter, councillors' no objection to your wedding celebration.
Can I just comment?
Yeah.
On one of the people.
Councillor Ryder.
Covered, and, yeah, thank you, that is the, the part about. Potentially funding some of the ASAP project to the, to a grant, I think this is vitally important. And I would ask staff to, to look into that, it's a substantial cost. And I think that what's been pointed out is that we might be able to access some grant funding on that. And the leveraging of the rural status is something that we really haven't taken advantage of. And I think we need to put some effort into that, that will really help our bottom line, if some of us in the room and outside the room. Have some familiarity and participated in that process, and I think it's beyond time that we take advantage of that. I'm in a rural area right now, and I see all around me the advantages that are available to rural communities in terms of grants. And the larger percentage that is offered in terms of funding. By a regional district or a, a, a governing district, so I really do think that staff should, should start looking into this and, and bringing something home on that.
Okay, thank you very much for that, councillor Ryder, I think staff is indicated they would look into it, so thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number thirteen, public questions, and Mr. Blackwell, if you can navigate our computer. And if anyone in the.
In the gallery?
In the gallery, please raise your hand, and we'll go to you for two minute question. Or comment. Okay, we're not seeing anyone in the gallery, we'll give you going once. Twice.
Open your mic and talk.
Thank you.
Three times.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the resumption closing, that the docs, there's nothing to report out, and item number fifteen, nothing, okay, motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Again.
All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed, carried.
With any issues for.
Councillor Bronn moved it, councillor out of the second. All in favor?
All in favor, yeah.
Thank you to the gallery for managing the CLE.
Thank you very much.
All right, Marcus, I'm going to hang you up.
Hey, thank you.